Okay, welcome back after lunch. We're going to continue the meeting. Does someone have a motion? Yes, councillor Fideev?
Yeah, with the sponsorship package that we just put through, I realized there was only one table, and we always get two tables, so I'd like to make the motion to get another table of eight.
Okay, thank you councillor Fideev.
And that's for the Bonneville Health Foundation Gala.
All right, for making, we're going to add that first. Because I'm going to have a table for sale. You agree, Donny?
Yeah.
All right, so Donny's taking us all out for supper tonight? Thanks, Donny. Thank you, Donny. We're just waiting for a motion to come up on the big screen. Okay, thank you councillor Fideev for making a motion on behalf of council. That council approves the purchase of one table, eight persons at the Bonneville Health Foundation Gala for a thousand from the 2024 council operation, operating budget. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Doesn't appear as though it's coming on my computer, but I'm in favor of it.
That's carried, thank you. Onto nine point, three point six.
Administration is presenting council with the Planning and Community Services Department 2023 Fourth Quarterly Report. The report is to keep council aware of the projects and activities undertaken within the many branches of this department, as well, in addition to our fourth quarter, we will also be presenting some year-end annual highlights for 2023 as well. First off, we will kick off with planning and development, so I'll ask Lisa to come forward.
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon.
So I have the fourth quarter progress report for planning and development. For development permits in the fourth quarter, we had forty-four development permits issued with a year-to-date of two hundred and forty-five permits for 2023. Average time to issue were two days for permitted use and twenty-four days for the discretionary use permits. As you can see from the chart on the bottom of the page, the permits were distributed across the municipality with the majority being issued in wards one, five, and six. Building permits, we had thirty-five building permits issued in the fourth quarter with a year in total of a hundred and forty-four. The average time to issue building permits for last year was fifteen days. Total construction value for Q4 was just over two-point-eight million with a year in total of seventeen-point-one million. Eighty percent of our building permits, a total of a hundred and sixteen permits, were for residential use with recreational use in second place at fourteen permits. Housing starts, we ended 2023 with five housing starts in the fourth quarter with a year in total of twenty-one. This included three ready-to-move homes, four mobile homes, and fourteen single-family dwellings. For subdivisions, six new applications were received in the last quarter for a total of twenty for the year. The average time to approve subdivisions' applications was forty-five days. One application was withdrawn, and after amendment to the land use by law, the applicant was then able to apply again for that subdivision. A total of twelve applications were endorsed to be registered at land titles in 2023. For safety code permits, in the last quarter, we had fifty-three electrical, seventy-three plumbing, nine gas, and thirteen septic permits. The average time to issue these permits were the same day, same day or next day for electrical, plumbing, and gas permits, and one-point-five days for the septic permits. Two-hundred-and-sixty inspection ports were completed in the last quarter with a total of one-thousand-and-thirty-three reports processed for 2023. The chart at the bottom of the page has a breakdown of the total permits by discipline, and I did want to bring to your attention, there is a typo. The gas permit amount there is one-twenty, not two-oh-two. Some updates, we had a hundred and forty-nine Realtor reports completed with a turnaround time of one-point-five days. Two-hundred-and-ninety-nine rural address signs were ordered, and three-hundred-and-twenty-nine signs had been picked up. Seventeen new non-compliances were received in 2023, and we were actually able to resolve thirty-four non-compliances. Resolutions included issuings of permits, removal of non-compliance, or ceasing a non-conforming use. A hundred and forty-six satisfaction surveys were sent out last year, and we received nineteen responses. We're very happy with the feedback that we did receive. Ninety-four percent were satisfied or very satisfied with the overall experience. A hundred percent were satisfied with the ease, satisfied or very satisfied with the ease of the inspection request, and ninety-four percent were satisfied or very satisfied with the knowledge of the planning and development staff. Some year-end updates, we did have some completed projects in 2023. We completed the municipal development plan. We also completed an inter-municipal development plan with the city of Cold Lake. Sixteen municipal properties were tendered for licensing with twelve of them awarded. Nineteen roadway licensing applications were completed. We had two area structure plan amendments, the Aurora Borealis Area Structure Plan and the Lacore Area Structure Plan. We completed four policy amendments, the municipal road approach policy, municipal lands policy, lands acquisition policy, as well as the cemeteries policy. We also had one new policy creation, which is the licensing of municipal lands policy. So this policy was required to ensure the municipal titled parcels, not required for municipal use, were licensed in a fair and equitable manner. We had two land use by law amendments. The first was the creation of the two new direct control districts, the municipal district of Bonneville Regional Airport District, as well as the industrial direct control district. And we had an amendment to section fifty-seven, the resource extraction, conveyance, and facilities. Changes include removing texts that limited development and subdivision within proximity of oil and gas facilities. We have a few projects that are ongoing from 2023 moving into 2024. The public land purchase from the province, so the Marie Lake subdivision lands, which is the lands surrounding the existing residential subdivision that typically would have been taken as environmental or municipal reserve, are currently titled to forestry, so that application, we are just waiting on final approval from the province. There Crane Lake West parcel, which is a small parcel on the west side of Crane Lake, that is crown lands that typically would have had an environmental reserve designation at the time of subdivision. So that application has gone in, it's been submitted and reviewed. We have been advised that we are tenth in the queue for that one for processing. The city of Cold Lake annexation, so Cold Lake has submitted the application to the Land and Property Rights Tribunal. The creation of the general municipal servicing standard, so this right now is in research and drafting stage. We have five area structure plans we'll be working on this year. Moose Lake ASP and the Chicken Hill ASP engagement sessions have been planned for the end of this month. The Crane Lake and Highway Fifty-Five area structure plans, we'll be planning engagement sessions later on this year, as well as the Highway Twenty-Eight Forty-One area structure plan, which will be a review and most likely minimal updates of the current plan that was completed in 2018. And that completes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, councillor Fideev.
Can I look, get a little more clarification to the Marie Lake subdivision lands? What does final review mean?
From, from what we could find out through environmental coordinator, it's just in the final stages, and we're hoping it's anytime soon. That's the clarification that we got.
Anytime, like, is that like within a year, within the next year, or?
Hopefully, hopefully within this year.
This year?
Hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
I had a quick question.
Oh, sure.
We've had our new signs out how long? Rural address signs.
The rural address signs have been out for?
The new ones, though.
Oh, only, like, the new ones only a couple of years from the faded ones?
Yeah.
Correct, yeah.
How is the new, any update on the signs if they're better quality or haven't been outlawed?
We have been seeing a lot less faded signs, so the ones that we're still catching are from the old ones that have been put out there.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we've had some good feedback from the new signs.
So how many have we, have we replaced, fifty percent of them, or?
Oh, no, not even.
Not even close.
Just a small portion, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Good afternoon, Reeve and council.
Afternoon.
I'm before you today to present a fourth quarter report and year-end for economic development. Business and industry growth strategy updates. Under the category of investment readiness, you'll see in front of you a series of activities. The MD Business Registry Program is ongoing. The economic development website is seventy-five percent complete. Business visitation program is ongoing. I, I hope to bring a report back in the spring after a full year of business visitations with a summary report. The value proposition is one-hundred percent completed. The investment attraction strategy is approximately forty percent complete. We had an ACP Commercial Industrial Property Listing Grant Application that was successful. We had a business attraction retention expansion program is thirty percent complete. Our community, community profile is ninety-five percent complete. We were involved with or supported a Small Communities Opportunities Grant for unmanned aerial vehicles. That application is pending. That was in conjunction with the, with the hub. The MBA Bonneville Regional Airport Enhancement is pending as part of a grant application for the Northern Regional Economic Development Grant, and that was part of a larger overall application for an investment attraction strategy. In economic diversification, regional economic development collaboration continues. We participate in the Hub and REEP, which is the Regional Economic Information Sharing Partnership, and we're also involved in, in other collaborations when appropriate and available. We work with Invest Alberta and Invest Canada as they provide lead generations for us. There was nothing to report in the, in the last quarter. And an ongoing project is identifying shovel-ready projects which are important for our investment attraction. Under brand development, we continue to create communication materials when needed. I have recently started work on the MD Champion Ambassador Program, which is sixty-six percent complete. We support the MD branding strategy whenever possible as needed. Growing Your Business is an Economic Development Newsletter, which is produced quarterly. We've had three issues produced so far during my tenure here, and we hope to have another one out within the next, within the next week. Creating opportunities for councils for opportunities for business growth. That continues whenever there's an opportunity for council to be involved in initiatives. I work through Esther and, and through our CEO to make sure that that opportunity continues to exist. During the fourth quarter for conferences, we attended the Power Up North Conference, which was put on by Community Futures and held at the casino in Cold Lake First Nations. Lead generation in the fourth quarter, we had none. We have a new opportunity that was brought to our attention just in the last two weeks from Invest Alberta, which I will report on in the next quarter report. Industrial stakeholder meetings included Food Connect, Jobs Economy and Northern Development, the industrial, sorry, East Central Alberta Regional Innovation Network, where I provided two client leads from our community. Continue to work with and meet with Community Futures. Invest, the Invest Alberta Community Profile Review, which was done annually, which we completed in the fourth quarter. Bonneville Centralized High School Work Experience Student has completed. We are active in continuing to correspond and meet with pathways whenever possible. Also involved with the Rural Development Network and the Economic Developers of Alberta, being involved in their hosting investors in aerospace manufacturing seminars. In Vincent, in Vincent Projects, I spoke earlier about the NRED grant applications pending, and we should have that information back to us by March. Participated in grant applications through the Alberta Community Partnership Program, and we provided letters of support, again, for the unmanned aerial vehicle mobility, which is pending. Economic development website and design continues. Community investment profile continues. We've started work on the Site Link program, and I made a presentation to senior leadership in the third quarter, which was received positively. I attended the Chamber Awards and attended the Canadian Western Agribition. That gentleman is a summary. I would gladly undertake any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, Joan? Looks like you're getting off pretty scot-free today. Nope, nope, we got one.
So we've been going out of here for a while now. Well, in the past while, what have we been receiving? Don't have to say names, or receiving interest in possible diversification of businesses in our area? Are you getting lots of inquiries?
It's a, I, could you, the question is a bit general, so I think you're asking about an update on any sort of business requests we've had?
Yeah, just not on the type of business. I understand you want to kind of keep it kind of quiet, but.
Right.
Like, what kind, are we receiving any inquiries?
Yeah, I can generalize. Certainly, we have, we have businesses and individuals that approach me to start businesses, and we have other businesses that approach me for relocation, right? And so, as stated earlier, I've had a couple of businesses that have come to me for a business plan development, and I've sourced them out to either Community Futures Lakeland or to other sources, and one of them was the East Central Regional Innovation Network. And so those were around manufacturing and aerospace. And I've had individual requests or consultations with individuals that are in value-added agriculture. Is that the level of information that you're?
Yeah, that's correct, but then we're getting, are we getting like quite a bit of interest from agriculture companies coming to help sustain or diversify or like help with our agriculture business?
So, so again, in, as a, as a general response, I don't, I don't, I can't recall any agricultural companies that have approached us from the perspective of value-added or tertiary production, if that's what you're, what you're looking for as far as the, the level of investment or the size of the business. There haven't been any that would be considered extraordinary, if that's what you're looking for.
So is there something that we can do as council to help assist with trying to get some subsidiary businesses to help?
I'm going to.
With our agriculture industry?
I'm going to give you an answer that may sound a little pat, but we have put together a business and industry growth strategy, and in that strategy, we, we, there's a couple of things that we've indicated would be important to do that. And that, one of those things would be, or two of those things would be, include shovel-ready projects or information that we have where we have a significant amount of either a resource or an investment lead locally that we could work with, and then creating what we call investment levers. And that's looking at all of our policies and procedures and documents and mating it with our expectation. So if we're saying that we want to go after agriculture, or we want to go after something in renewable energy, our policies need to reflect that because we need to be competitive with the, the folks that are doing the same, and we have to have a value proposition or something that separates us from them so that we stand out. So at some point in time, we will, as economic development, come to council and ask to support or identify those particular levers to do that. Because right now, we can say things like, it's a great place to live, a great place to do business, and we have low taxes or whatever. We need to actually have the policies where we can say, these are the things that we're doing to support economic development, whether it's research, whether it's job creation, whatever it is. Those statements have to come from council that are valid statements that we can actually publish, which make us stand out and, and make us look better than other communities that are vying for the same resources. Does that answer your question?
Yep. When could we expect these recommendations come forth, like on policy, maybe changes or something?
At this point in time, I, I don't have it as a, I don't have it earmarked in the calendar for a specific date. We're currently looking at that information. Like many of the other things in the industry and growth strategy, sometimes it's, it's planned and sometimes it's responsive based on, say, grants that could be available or access to certain other resources that would help us develop those, those policies, right?
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Just to add to Scott's report, councillor Subchuck, as far as policy changes go and review of the levers, you'll probably see that coming up here in the next six months. Probably tied a lot back to the Site Link Conference that we're going to have here in September. So a lot of that, getting that opportunity to get that direct input from actual site selectors is going to be invaluable to feed into those policies.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeve, and to council, specifically to councillor Subchuck, there is one policy, however, that council has complete control over at any time, that has the biggest bearing on any new business moving to the MD, and that's the commercial, non-industrial, commercial industrial tax rates. We could put in all kinds of policies and have all kinds of nice statements about how great it would be to start a business here, but if.
Mill rate.
If we're leading the way with high mill rates, then.
No one's coming.
Flowery statements and fluffy statements won't do anything. Businesses want a tangible benefit to being here, and that's either through an educated, qualified workforce. That's either through low tax rates or low cost of doing business. And then some of the other things, transportation routes come into it, et cetera, et cetera. So the province has a role to play in terms of what our provincial highway system looks like. But the number one lever that council has to in, to increase economic activity in the area is through mill rates.
Thank you, Esme.
Thank you. The next section I'll tackle is asset management. Just a quick update on our asset management program. Our focus right now is still on our asset register and data collection. It is quite a comprehensive amount of information that our team is going through. So this past year, we've hit seventy percent complete on both our utility areas of waterline inventory and our tour line system. We're about ninety percent complete on our campground asset register and work on our upcoming state of the infrastructure report for campground infrastructure. Our landfill and transfer site inventory visits are ninety percent complete. Our asset retirement obligations, which is a requirement across the province to all municipalities, we're just getting started, we're a little bit more than ten percent complete, working with all the departments and identifying our asset lists that have that, that retirement obligation. Our asset register and data collections were completed by field visits. Review of our existing GIS data and input from our staff, where sometimes, as you can imagine, it's a lot of information from inside their heads that we need to get on paper. Policies and documents completed in 2023 were both the terms of reference for the basis of our governance, administrative governance structure, which is our asset management working group and our steering committee. This year, we did present two state of the infrastructure reports. One focused on our bridges infrastructure, the other on our buildings and facilities. Moving into 2024, we, as I mentioned, we will be presenting both the Parks and Recreation Services Campground Assets State of the Infrastructure Report, as well as our Waste Services Department on our landfill and bin sites here within the next month or two at the latest. As well, the implementation of our bridges and our buildings are both continuing forward. Training in 2023, we were able to attend the Infrastructure Asset Management Alberta Quarterly Workshops with a cross-departmental team. Highly involved was our IT department, which is very important as we move into purchasing our software this year. We also had an asset management small group learning team that received training again through IMA, RMA, and Alberta Munis, as well as that same team did also participate in cohort training program. And across the organization, all staff were able to attend a one-day online training course entitled The Learning Pass to Asset Management Readiness, which is put on by Asset Management Saskatchewan Association. That once particularly, we had sixty-two members of our staff complete this training. Seventy-seven members have registered, and we do have this free of charge until the end of February. Our GIS department, as you know, our GIS coordinator completes quite a bit of work across all departments, so that's just a breakdown of the, the number of projects she worked on over the course of 2023. And continuing into 2024, there will be a Waste Services Interactive Map completed. She continues to pull together our road inventory data reconciliation information into our GIS system. As well, she will be focusing on our 2024 ownership map, as well as road agreement, public application maps in 24. Any questions for asset management? Okay.
Thank you.
As council knows, we have had a bit of a shift in our Parks and Recreation Department. It was, we're very sad to see our Parks and Recreation Manager Rodney Gilleball leave us just recently. However, although there was sadness, there is now newfound happiness in our new Parks and Recreation Manager, Greg Shepherd. So Greg is here to say hi. I told him he didn't have to wear a tie today, but after this, he's, he's out of luck. He's got to have to tie up. That was not very appropriate, sorry. Anyway, so.
You didn't tell him you had to shave his beard, though, right?
No, Al did try to tell him that, but. So yes, I just wanted to bring that to council's attention, and Greg will be giving this presentation in the next quarterly report as well. I'll also point out Kim Vrul, she's our new community programming coordinator as well. So she'll also be attending council meetings, particularly with regards to the Visitor Information Center and our grant programs. So moving into the quarterly report, our trail usage counter statistics. You'll see that they've incorporated where the trail counters are located, just for council's information. A little bit more info there. And then the breakdown per quarter of the counts, which will show you that our, our busy, our busiest times are definitely quarter two and quarter three. Our Nordic skiing at Maria Lake Trails, we didn't have enough this, in the fourth quarter to open them as of December thirty-first. Last year, we were actually able to open those on November nineteenth. As far as the trails go, Greg, were we able to have enough snow to open them just yet?
We did. Go now, we started to move.
Great, thank you. Our 2023 campground usage rates are posted there. Council had asked for a little bit more information on those during the budget deliberations. So we did throw in here as well the percent that each campground is booked or was booked in 2023. So overall, you can see Vezo Beach was our highest, our highest, had our highest occupation at fifty-five percent. Following that is our French Bay, and closely behind that is the Cold Lake MD Park and Crane Lake East, followed by Crane Lake West. Community event, we did a work in conjunction with Cold Lake Hearts for Healthcare this past Christmas season to volunteer and host the Sparkle in the Park. past Christmas season to volunteer and host the Sparkle in the Park event. It was overwhelmingly successful, again, with thirty thousand, over thirty thousand raised for local healthcare initiatives, just over twenty-three hundred kilograms of donated food was collected for the local food bank, over thirty-two hundred vehicles came through the park, and over fifty companies and organizations had displays across our Loop C in the Cold Lake MD Park. On the revenue and expense side for our campgrounds, that just shows you a breakdown of the revenues and expenses, and the overall net of all of our campgrounds is in the positive at eighty-four thousand. However, as you can see from some of them, some are definitely carrying other locations. The expenses that are included within the expense category included everything from utilities, caretaker fees, maintenance and repairs, contracted services, et cetera, et cetera. And on the revenue side, those revenues are for the campsite rentals themselves, firewood sales, the coin showers at a couple of our locations, and concession sales. The other new thing that we were able to pull up is our percentage of campground users by location, as far as where do they live. So, that table there will show you that overall, we do receive fifty percent of our visitors are from outside of the area but within Alberta, City of Cold Lake at twenty percent, MD of Bonneville's residents at eighteen percent, Town of Bonneville at six percent, and outside of Alberta, within Canada, five percent, and a few international visitors. We also have this broken down by campground, which will be available for council, should you wish to know that level of detail. And last but not least is our 2024 campground rate schedule. You also have a hard copy in front of you, just for ease of use. This was a request of council to have this information that came up during our budget deliberations. So, overall, just a couple of highlights here is that we are doing increases specifically at Cold Lake Campground to bring it up in comparison to the provincial Cold Lake Park, so that it's more in line with that. Yeah, so council, if, overall, everything here, it's all booked online through our Let's Camp online system. We are on par to start and open that up for reservations April 1st, as we did last year. There is a minor booking fee of three dollars if your booking is under a hundred dollars. Over a hundred dollars, then your booking fee is five dollars. The weekly rate that you'll see there is the equivalent of you book seven days, you pay for six. Our monthly rate is very similar to that at our sites that allow our monthly camping or seasonal camping, specifically at Mario Lake and Vezo Beach. Our cancellation policy remains the same, which is you will be, for cancellation, within seventy-two hours of notice, you will only be charged one night of your booking. Anything within the seventy-two hour notice, there is no refund. Firewood bundles this year will be changing. Instead of wheelbarrels of wood at fifteen dollars, now that we have our bundling machine, we're able to standardize that across all campgrounds, which they're smaller in size, however, they're going down to ten dollars. Any questions on campgrounds?
Yes, Councilor Subchak?
Yeah, I noticed on Cold Lake Campground, you guys increased the powered site by five, eight dollars, but the Vezo Beach only increased one dollar for powered site. How do we determine those fluctuations in that price?
Through the, you had mentioned Cold Lake, and which was the other one?
Vezo Beach.
Vezo Beach. So, so Vezo Beach, we were currently at for a powered site thirty-eight dollars for, or that is, so it is going up a dollar versus Cold Lake. So, Cold Lake does have, it's a little bit different where we have the Cold Lake Provincial Park right close by. So, that coupled with the expansion that has happened out at Cold Lake was the main reason why we increased it up to forty-five. The provincial park rate in comparison I can tell you that, just give me one quick second. Cold Lake Provincial Park, their tent site rate is thirty-two dollars, their non-powered rate is forty dollars, and their powered site rate is actually forty-eight dollars. So, we did bring it more up, however, again, we didn't want to totally make it a huge massive jump, which is why we just went with what we did.
No, I was just thinking, at the Vezo Beach campground, we've spent a lot of money on the new dock and piers and everything. I would say that we should be able to charge at least forty-two on that one, or forty, but like, I thought that would be more up than a doll.
Mr. Riva, members of council, the difference between Vezo and Cold Lake is Cold Lake is going to have a very specific boat launch that no one else is allowed to use. You have to be a camper at Cold Lake to use that boat launch when it's finally opened up. Vezo Beach Boat Launch is open to the general public. I would not disagree that there should be money and revenue collected for the use of that boat launch, but I think that would be separate from the campsite fee, because they don't have isolated access to the boat launch. Anybody could go launch a boat at Vezo Beach, but at Cold Lake, you have to be a registered camper to launch your boat at the Cold Lake Boat Launch.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Fiv.
Yeah, just, I'm glad things are going up in Cold Lake as far as that goes. Some of the local private campground companies have expressed their discontent with our rates, that we're a lot cheaper and the camping is being subsidized in the MD, so I'm glad our rates are coming into line and competitive that way.
So, next, outdoor rinks. We, as you know, with our warm weather this year, we were able to open our three rinks on December 22nd. It was about a week or so earlier in last year. Overall, just a little bit of tidbit of information, in order for us to flood the rinks, the temperature needs to be consistently between minus seven and minus twenty. Anything over or above that either makes it impossible to maintain the ice, or it creates massive cracks or bubbles or whatnot. So, that is definitely the best time for our teams to go out and create the ice. Twenty-twenty-three capital projects update. Our completed projects in 2023 included the Ardmore Covered Rink, the Cherry Grove Covered Rink, AKA, really, these are more focused on the warming shacks or buildings, our Vezo Beach Boat Launch, our Pelican Point Outhouse Replacements, our Angling Lake Boat Launch, our intermunicipal trails master plan completion with the City of Cold Lake, and the Crane Lake East gazebo. Carrying forward, that had been started and going into 2024, our Cold Lake MD Park Boat Launch. We are currently still waiting on the final decision on our First Nations consultation. We have our Visitor Information Center building retrofit at eighty percent complete, our Vezo Beach Phase Two at ninety percent, and our Lacore Rec Park development at ninety percent. Any questions on capital projects? No, good. Our Visitor Information and Interpretive Center, 2023 at a glance, is very, these are the same numbers, a little bit of an update to the fourth quarter. Fourth quarter is seeing very few people come through. Overall items to note, the majority of our visits took place on the weekdays between 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM for the year. Our trading post gross revenue was forty-seven hundred dollars, just over, with two-hundred-and-thirty-seven items being sold. Our concession gross revenue was twenty-nine hundred dollars, with just over eleven hundred items being sold. The majority of our visitors are definitely within the summer and fall seasons. At the trading post specifically, we highlighted and continue to highlight the work of our local artisans. Specifically, we've showcased twenty-two local artisans and businesses, and there's a listing of those there. I'll also let council know that, starting in the next week or so, we will be officially launching the rental program of the boardroom down in the Visitor Information and Interpretive Community giving. So, our 2023 numbers, our total grant sponsorships and donations equated to just over one million seven-hundred thousand dollars. This equated to over two-hundred applications and donations that were awarded. The community action grant specifically seen thirteen awards totaling three-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. The council contributions that were awarded through resolution equated to eighteen requests at a value of a hundred-and-seventy-one thousand nine-hundred-and-forty dollars. Our community association operating grant had twenty-two grants awarded at five-hundred thousand dollars. In our donations and sponsorships, through our donation sponsorship and recognition policy, awarded a hundred-and-forty-nine requests totaling, on the monetary side, just over sixty thousand, and in the in-kind and promotional items, donations equating to a value of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and thirty. Of those in-kind services, there were sixty-seven hundred dollars that were provided as vouchers either to our campgrounds or to Kinnisou Ridge. Of that sixty-seven hundred, we had just over sixteen hundred redeemed. And this is followed by our entire list of recipients for 2023. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, good. Well, with that, I will ask our two Kinnisou Ridge managers to present the final section.
Thanks, Esther.
Good afternoon, Riva and council.
Good afternoon.
So, we're here for our fourth quarter report for 2023. So, we'll start with our first slide. There we go. And as you can see, from 2022, from 2023, there's about a fifteen percent increase. We were on a call last night with Canada West with some of the small ski fields, hills within the association, and what we heard was that actually a lot of hills this year, the season memberships or passes, whatever system they use, had gone down quite a bit, somewhere between thirty and sixty percent. So, for us to have this fifteen percent increase, I think it speaks to all the staff and the hard work with our maintenance people getting snow on those hills and maintaining them as we've started this season. Next slide. Here we have the hill revenue versus expenses, and as you can see, there's a small asterisk at the bottom there with regards to the expenses are wages only, not through operating. And come April, we will be having more information coming to council, just talking about levels of service and the continuation of a business, as we've talked about, and delivering the hill as a business. So, you can see from those numbers, your wages, although you did have step increases in cost of living, it's slightly lower this year, and then, as you see, the revenue is slightly higher there. Go to the next slide. This is just a breakdown of sales with comparisons from '22 to '23, going through tubing, lessons, lift tickets, school groups, and passes. And although in the fourth quarter, it's sort of the first quarter for the ski season, the numbers of season passes are quite close at the moment, and the revenue is over, so you're seeing more lift tickets as it's showing in the graph there, so the numbers are staying where they are. Next slide. Then we go through sales, season passes, so the seven-ninety-two passes for the fourth quarter. Year-to-date, we're at nine-ninety-two. Last year, we were at a thousand and fifty-seven, so as you can see, it is quite similar in numbers. Lift tickets, we were two-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-five, they were one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-four last season, so a good increase there. Tubing, this year at one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven, last year at one-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty. The lessons have gone up as well, this year at one-seventy-nine, last year at one-seventy-two. And then the school tickets, which includes skiing, tubing, and their lunches, all the numbers kind of incorporate into that area. Last year, due to a slightly later start in the season and some weather issues near the Christmas break prior to, there was only one tubing group that came through the schools, so there's the number difference there, as you can see. Next slide. As we go through the kitchen revenue and expenses, obviously, with the way that we had been operating the restaurant upstairs, we did have those staff wages coming in, so we didn't have those in 2022, so that sort of makes up that discrepancy there within the wages. On the flip side, you do see the revenue, and as our GM stated at the beginning of this, come April, we will be giving council more information to how we will move forward running as a business. Next slide is special events. So, just to give you sort of a breakdown, the dates associated, what type of events were being offered, and sort of the revenue coming off those events. So, as you can see, did quite well with those, a few Christmas parties in there, the wine pairing nights, which I know we had some council at this last weekend, so thank you. Next slide. And just our operational days. This year, we've had, within the fourth quarter, we had twenty operational days as opposed to thirteen the year before, and Dave will be talking about the challenges with, obviously, the weather and those type of things we've had, but Dave and his team did an excellent job getting the hill ready for us to use. And within the operational hours, if you look at Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, ten to five, and then the Friday, we've changed to the night ski from ten to nine to try to attract more people coming out, once again, keeping in the theme of that business model that we want the ski hill to run by. Next slide. So, guests from location. So, this slide is a map that, if you hover over on your actual electronic versions, it'll actually populate the numbers, but the main numbers that we want to look at, the City of Cold Lake, Town of Bonneville, obviously, our own internal users, and then total guests. Now, not saying that we've only had two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-seven guests, but the information last year, at the same time, you only had five-hundred-and-fifty-three. So, the way that we gather the information is through the waivers, through those items with postal codes. So this year, we have asked guest services to really try to track those numbers. As we, you know, look at the possibility of intermunicipal partnerships that could possibly come from the hill. So we are trying to get as much data as we can from city of Cold Lake and town of Bonneville. So when we do approach our other municipalities, we can come with a bit of a stronger case study. But if you look at one thousand two hundred guests for the population of the city of Cold Lake, it is quite a big number of the population. So hopefully, that can help us. Next slide. And I'm going to pass it over to Dave.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Snowmaking, I just want to touch on snowmaking real quick. As you can see up there, we've got some facts and figures compared to last year of what we produced. And as you can see, we produced an extra three and a half million gallons of snow due to the fact that we had zero natural snow. And we kind of strategically put all that snow over the whole of Kinnisou Ridge, not just on the runs that we typically have snowmaking on. So our guys worked hard pushing snow up runs we don't have infrastructure on. So we are a hundred percent man-made this year. Instead of having like eight dedicated staff per day, we reduced it down to six and still found that we made more snow and less time. Okay, so we didn't have any issues there. Although we did make snow for thirty-five days, it did stretch over seventy-eight days. So we were making snow in October till the second week in January. We did take a break over Christmas, and then we picked it up afterwards. So we've said, we'd better resource our staff at the guests that are actually coming to the hill. And then we fully opened everything January nineteenth. We could have opened everything January seventh, but we had ten days where we were closed due to the weather. So that was a bit of a hint there. If we continue to make snow from October twenty-third, we'd be done November twenty-seventh if we didn't have to shut down. We had to shut down nine times this year and start up nine times due to the weather. So we didn't have ideal conditions, but the guys in the ground made it work real good. And just want you guys to know that we were pumping around five hundred gallons the last two years. Our system can pump eight fifty if we have the weather to do so. Once we pump at eight fifty, instead of having twelve guns out there, we're only allowed to have six because we run out of water consumption. And because we only have the one pump, if that pump fails, our snowmaking fails. So that's just something to know about. Our system is designed to have a second pump installed at a later date, so we have capacity to do that. And then if we can do that, we can make more snow in a shorter period of time. So that's for snowmaking, next slide, please. And then here's just some program numbers we found from December opening this year. Because we were able to open a lot earlier, December second, we were able to put in a few private camps. So on the weekends, we had the kids coming out doing camps that we haven't done in a few years. So we had kids as young as three years old coming out skiing in camps. And we found that that number, the three to five-year-olds, we had a lot of interest in that, a lot of positive feedback, a lot of kids coming out skiing and snowboarding. Private lessons, we did an extra fifty private lessons this year in the same time. And the ski school before Christmas, we did a little bit more than we did last year. School tubing was huge before Christmas, and it just goes to prove that if we're opening our hill, we need to open our two park as soon as possible to get that revenue through the door. And then, next slide, please. There's a list of our capital projects we completed last year. Adventure Park's now complete, the chairlift replacement's complete. We had a snowmaking reciprocal breakers that we changed out to make them safer for the guys on the ground because we're dealing with four hundred and forty volts. Kitchen is ninety percent complete, and we're thinking of adding in some acoustical decor around the lodge upstairs to make it look nice and pretty. The main one that we did when me and Ian came in was the parking lot. We dropped all the power calls. Echo came in and really cleaned up the view from the lodge. So now you've got a clean view of the lake and there's no power poles going around everywhere. The blue chair drive retrofit was canceled, and the carpet lift covers were complete. AC upgrade and the generator for the lodge is going to be completed this year. Target Golf Stage One complete and the chairlift load decks on green were complete as well. And then I'll hand it back to you.
Okay, just going to the next slide, marketing. And as you can see by the graph, these are the Ridge, Kinnisou Ridge Resort with regards to Instagram, Facebook, as we put in each quarter, and just kind of showing kind of what those numbers are doing there. From a highlight perspective, radio advertising, newspapers, snow fever promotion coming up this weekend. Hope to see you guys all out there. Posters, brochures, the elevated adventure merchandise that we currently have, and Go Ski Alberta campaigns. And then the top locations where those are going out kind of align back through with usage to an extent. So you'll see Cold Lake, Edmonton is quite high in there, Bonneville, Lloyd, St. Paul. And that kind of summarizes our presentation. Just the one note, I know that in the third quarter, we talked about, you know, within the kitchen specifically, how that was a sort of seventy-five, twenty-five split, and we were trying to change that around. And in order to be a business, you couldn't run that way. And from December one, when we opened to February eleventh, just because it's the most current data, we're currently, our labor percentage to net sales is at twenty-nine point eight-four from about seventy. So it's definitely trending in the right direction. Obviously, seasonality has a lot to do with that, but it is within, you know, the realm of running a business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel Frey, then Counsel Swager.
I have three questions. So first one is night skiing. How is that going? And alongside with that one, there's, is there any age restrictions to the, to the ski lessons that you guys are bringing out?
Yeah, yeah. For the, for the ski lessons, for skiing, age restrictions, three and up. Usually, anything below three, they can't, the kids can't last forty-five minutes. So we do three- or five-year-olds forty-five minutes guaranteed on snow, and then those guys are out there fine. Snowboarding, we won't take snowboarding kids until they're about six years old because it's just a lot harder to teach, and then we have to have a lot more instructors per kid ratio.
Perfect, thank you.
And then what was the first?
And then night skiing and the?
Night skiing is doing better than the Wednesday night that it was last year. I don't have the exact numbers right now, but we are doing a lot better than last year because we moved it from Wednesday to a Friday. And we figured we'd try and intertwine that with the kitchen and have wing special wing nights to try and get guests to come out. Also, with our operation, we did cut an hour out of the day on the operations side of it. So we're open ten till four Monday, sorry, Wednesday, Thursday, Saturday, Sunday, instead of ten to five. And we haven't heard any negative feedback.
Awesome, thank you.
About that.
My last question is in regards to the postal code inputs. What are you taking? Because I know, I guess depending, are you guys asking where you're from or just the postal code input?
The postal code, and then we re-get that back up.
Right, because it's, it could be skewed. Because I'm quote-unquote in Cherry Grove, but my, like, my postal code is in Cold Lake. So if I give you my postal code by the first three prefixes, it would be wrong. I think it dives in further with the, with the last three. So I, I just, yeah, kind of caution you on that one.
Thank you, yeah. And definitely moving forward, as we've seen from the data from like five hundred addresses to, you know, twenty-seven hundred. We're definitely doing, doing the right thing, starting the right things. Just talking to a few of the other hills, what they're doing to try to track guests without, you know, breaking any FOP legislation and getting other information. So, you know, I, I think we can do possibly some draws, some other things to kind of entice people to kind of get the information then that we can use.
Yeah, because I know, yeah, we're going to be using those numbers in some sort of way later on. I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're correct on that versus being, oh, somebody's coming in.
Nope.
Get out of the way.
Just to answer that a little bit, I can tell you that for the campground numbers for sure, we, Kim actually went through it and differentiated between which ones were box numbers versus which ones were street addresses. Because in the town of Bonneville and the city of Cold Lake, I think there's about ninety, ninety-five percent of them are street addresses. So we're able to break down going a little bit farther from just the post, post office, sorry, the postal code.
Sure, makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Peter Goodbin, Counsel Swager.
I think Ian made the comment about the backup water pump. Is that something that you budgeted for, and we didn't get it, or do you know?
No, it wasn't budgeted for this year. As we're looking at adding some more equipment, snow guns and that, we've kind of come to that realization that that is something that for the twenty twenty-five budget. I have looked through various grant opportunities through the government of Alberta, federal government, and then the Alberta Eco Trust environmental grants, just to see if there is any other way that we can potentially spend money. So come April, we will be coming with more information about this additional pump and then sources of funding around it. But it would be a twenty twenty-five budget item.
Okay, so, because my concern was if, you kind of indicated that maybe if it failed, you'd have no water.
Yeah, that, that was definitely a scary realization for us coming onto the hill, knowing that we had no redundancies in place. That should something fail, we would have that ability.
Yeah, I'd still be, I'd still be scared. I mean, if it failed next, you know, fails, it fails, right? I'm not sure, is it easy to fix or is it?
Just to be clear, this is just a snowmaking pump. It's nothing to do with, it isn't easy to fix, no, you've got to pull the whole pump out the roof. Now, we did buy a mechanical seal, so if the seal does blow, we are able to replace it within a day of it breaking. And if something goes on with the appeller down below, then it's probably out for the season.
Okay, well, that would shut the ski hill down if it kind of quit right away in the season or whatever, so.
If it quit, we quit, right?
Yeah. So, and then I had a question about, well, first of all, the meal at Ski Hill was amazing. Yeah, it was that wine and, you know, wine and food pairing, it was amazing. Like, I, I think you'd be able to sell that out all the time, I'm hoping. But I was also a little concerned that the, that the chef may not be there for a while, so. Anyway, yeah, I'm sure you've got a plan for that. Target Golf, interesting because you said Stage One complete, and it's exciting. Is there going to be kind of a Stage Two, Three or something, or?
Yeah, just to that, to council. Yeah, I mean, the first year, they did put the T-boxes out, some netting up, a few targets. And we did see that there was some revenue that came in, you know, some revenue went out. I don't think it was a total what everyone envisioned. But come April, when we start looking at the level of service and how do we run this like a business, I think we'll get more into what that looks like and where revenue comes from.
Okay, and then a question about the swing. Did the swing ever, is it back running or was it back running last summer? Or will it be this summer?
The swing can be operational for this summer, and to my knowledge, it is operational right now. There are checks we need to do, go through it, but to my knowledge, it's running right now.
Okay, I mean, it wouldn't be used in the winter, but it would be used in the summer.
No, it would be used in the summer, and it just needed to be staffed accordingly because it needs two members of staff to run it.
Okay, hmm. Then the last question was the, the bike lifts. Is that something we kind of have in the plan for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-four?
Through your worship to council? We have been having quite a few discussions with various other resorts with regards to various items like some insurances and those type of things. And then looking at actual fleet costs if we want to offer programming within our own current facility, replacement costs, and then, you know, staffing levels to what that will look like. And I think that'll be another item that we will be discussing for sure in April.
Thank you.
I think the worship is dozing off once in a while, so be careful what you say.
Yeah, I just want to mention, I've got a lot of feedback on how the positives, like the resort, how you guys, the workers and everything, very good attitudes, pleasant, never heard nothing negative this year from anybody, and a lot of kudos to you. And on that note, I'd like to ask about our business plan that we had a while ago. Has that been sent forward to Minister Todd Lowen? And have we heard anything back?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Sivchik. Through to Reeve, to the, to the last question first. Yes, the Kinnisou Master Business Plan was sent to Minister Lowen probably well before, well, sometime early, early to mid-December. We've heard absolutely nothing, nothing back regarding that. Second, on the bike lifts, I think there are some things that sound really good in practice or in theory that don't work very well in practice. The lift costs us in power to operate about a thousand dollars a day. I don't know how many people I have to have on the lift to have a couple of people working the lift plus the power bill to run a lift, to somebody to hang their bike on the bottom. We thought, we envisioned at one point that it'd be a great idea, that people could just go up and then it could walk back down, and it's a beautiful view. But to run one lift at a cost of a thousand dollars a day, plus the extra staffing, even the swing, for example, two people to run the swing, and then we could run four people an hour on the swing. It's just, it's labor-intensive for a very, for a very short ride. It's, some of these things, although they sound really good and would be fun to do, the fact is that, given council's direction and budget to run this like a business, I think there are some things that are going to go off the wayside because we just can't, we, we just, we don't have the volume to have a reasonable enough price. And if we were to increase the price to cover the costs, we'd have zero volume. So I, I think some of these things sound great in, in theory, but in reality, to run the lift three days a week is three thousand dollars. I don't even think we cover the labor costs to run the, in terms of what we get for revenue. So these things have to be really looked at hard in terms of council's direction to run this like a business. And I think some of these things are going to be, are going to be very difficult to move ahead with.
Thank you. Any other questions for these gentlemen?
Just, just a, just a comment. You guys did a great job making the snow. My kids skied out there last year and this year, and it opened earlier this year, and we had really bad weather compared to last year for opening, so good job with the snow.
Good job. Next, or that was it? No, Esther? Was, Esther's going to finish it off here.
Yes, just, you'll notice I had a couple of recommended motions there. The first one is just to accept our report as information. The second one, which I just wanted to bring forward as for council's consideration. So overall, as far as our grant programs go, specific to our donations, recognition and sponsorship policy, we do not have a limit as far as how many times an organization can apply through that policy. And just as a reminder, we do have it attached as, as the final appendix, but it's for any, any of those requests that we get that are less than two thousand dollars or donation requests or promotional items, that sort of thing. Although we gave a hundred and forty-nine away or awarded to the community, I would say that equates to about sixty to seventy percent of what we actually received. So it is quite, there's quite a few. We have noticed that there were definitely organizations that are more on the ball that have applied and were successful through that five or six or seven times. Other ones, other community groups, they're not aware of it. It also includes all of our sport groups, all of our school groups, we're grad and that sort of thing as well. So what I wanted to bring forward for council to consider is to put a limit on specifically the ones for donations and sponsorships that are event-based. You, if you could actually pull up the policy itself and just scroll down to the first section, the donations and sponsorship section. I, I wanted to bring forward a request to council to throw in a maximum of two successful applications per year to the donations and sponsorship section. This would not impact our youth sports section, which, or the school section regarding graduations or sports teams. It would just be for, for more of the event sponsorship requests that we get. So there are two motions, recommended actions that I've, I've listed there. If council does not want to limit that to two requests, that's totally fine as well, but I did want to bring it forward now. I will also mention that in our upcoming Committee of the Hole meeting, as during the budget during the budget deliberations, you had asked us to relook at all of our grant programs. So that'll be coming to council here shortly in a more comprehensive manner, but this one was just a one-off that I wanted to make now.
Do you want to make this into one motion if someone wishes to? Or you want it as two motions?
Um, I would, uh, through, I, I would keep it as two, cause one is the report versus the actual amendment to our policy.
Would like, someone like to make the first motion? Yeah, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick for making a motion on behalf of council. The council accepts plans and communication services department, two thousand twenty-two fourth quarterly report as information. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Would anyone want to make the other motion? Or any comments on that?
Yeah, I got a, I didn't understand the sixty percent or you said some kind of percentage there that I didn't.
Sure, um, so currently, I think it was a hundred and forty-nine applications that were approved under the donation and sponsorship policy. So I'm, I was just stating that that's only a portion of the applications or the requests that we do get in.
Oh, okay, so we, yeah, okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Overall, um, council, if, if you wish to, the only reason I would recommend limiting it is if you want to share it across more organizations than necessarily, um, focusing and allowing it for the frequent flyers, uh, but other than that, if, if you're happy with the way things are, that's okay too.
Yes, Counselor.
So how many, uh, kind of frequent flyers are there? Is it like sort of two or three communities asking for way more than two? Is that?
I would say there's probably, out of that hundred and forty-nine awarded requests, there's probably ten or so that have multiple requests that were approved.
And so those requests were exceeded two? You said probably up to seven, didn't you say?
I think the largest one was seven, seven approved requests.
So if you're thinking two is the right number? Or, you know, I'm just wondering, is it two or is it three or? I guess you've recommended two.
Uh, through the Reeve, I can tell you that there is a lot, a lot of events and a lot of activity in our community, which is wonderful. It's, there is a lot of things going on that these associations do. And, um, it, I'm blown away every time that I learn that there's another one that I didn't even know about because there are just so, so many. So I personally think it's great that the MD helps where we can, but at the same time, I also know, uh, it is a, it's, it's, we're doing a lot, over a million dollars in requests and over two hundred, um, two hundred different sponsorships and approvals. That's, that's a lot for any municipality. I'm very proud that we do what we do. At the same time, if, I know it was discussed whether or not we want to just focus it in and on one or two large projects, that's definitely a great thing as well. It's totally up to council.
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
Our grant programs have gotten very complicated. Um, I can hardly keep up and I, uh, and I've got my nose in these things on a daily basis. One of the things that, uh, we are gonna probably bring to council at some point in the next few months is whether or not, particularly for the larger grants, whether there should be a couple of days set aside pre-budget. Because one of the things that's happening now, for example, since budget was, uh, was essentially passed at the beginning of December, we've now had seven hundred thousand dollars worth of requests that we have nothing budgeted for. Um, if we had all of those people come for a two or three-day session in October, maybe special council meeting setup, those numbers could then be budgeted for. But I think one of the holdbacks, one of the resistance to some of these is the fact that people are thinking, well, uh, you know, somebody's got a request for a hundred and fifty or three hundred or five hundred thousand, as some of the requests have been, well, where's the money coming from, cause we didn't budget for? Um, it would, it would make me feel better as administrator if council wanted to approve a million dollars worth of grants, that we at least set that money aside in the budget. There'd still be some, obviously, uh, you know, for some of the smaller stuff that would happen during the year. But we're getting these big grant applications and, you know, we had, uh, we had application today, we had several to the last council meeting, and one in particular since budget was passed was for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, I, I think, I think there, I think there is some logic to having several days set aside. It's not uncommon in municipalities in Alberta where there's a couple of days for other organizations to come forward with their grant applications, a couple of long days for council and staff, obviously, but I think those then could be put into the budget. You would know exactly what you would have going as opposed to, uh, having somebody come as a delegation and March asking you for a half million dollars, to which you're not quite sure where it's gonna come from. Uh, do we have to dip into reserves and all those other things as opposed to it just being budgeted for? So that's, that's, that's a change that I think we're gonna be talking to council about, uh, as we get into the spring months, uh, so I just kind of put it out there, um, to try to simplify and streamline this a little bit.
Thank you.
Uh, so Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion, then if you wanna, uh, you know, try it for the-
Sure.
Two, limited to two applications per group?
Thank you, Counselor Swager.
We'll figure that out, we'll monitor that over the year.
For making motion on behalf of council, the council approves amending policy number two A zero zero three, donation sponsorship and recognition policy to limit the maximum award of donations and sponsorship requests proceeding under the section one or two, request per year, per applicant. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Carrie?
Thank you.
Any of these, uh, reports, could we put them off to another meeting or, or what, are we gonna be here till like five o'clock or?
Uh, Mr. Reeve, I, I look at the agenda and, uh, I think nine point four point one, uh, I think that's something that Mr. Vespulco certainly needs, uh, as, uh, as there are tax auctions coming up. Um, nine point five point one and nine point five point two, um, and nine point six point one are probably the three or four things. I think the quarterly reports we could certainly put off to the next meeting, but I think, uh, the public auction, uh, establishing reserve bid, the water and sewer policy amendment, the right-of-way pipeline placement request and the request for regional assessment review board, I think those are four that probably need to be, uh, to be addressed.
Okay, what does council think? Do you wanna go through the quarterlies or leave them for another meeting? All right, we'll leave those to the next meeting. We'll do the ones that, uh, Mr. Hogan just talked about. Onto nine point four point one, Mr. Vespulco, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council. Today we bring you the, uh, public auction establishing the reserved bid. Council is required to set reserve bids and conditions for each of the parcels of land to be offered for sale at the public auction. The conditions were established at the regular meeting of council on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Council is now required to set reserve bid, uh, prior to the public auction, scheduled to be held on Friday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Section four nineteen of the municipal government act states that council must set for each parcel of land to be offered for sale at public auction, a reserve bid that is close as reasonably possible to the market value of the parcel and any conditions that apply to the sale. The reserve bid has been established by the municipal assessors after review of the current real estate market sales. The conclusion of this review is that the estimated market value of the below-listed property is for legal nine eight two one one two five, block one, link number zero zero two seven four one five one four one, roll number fifty-nine oh eight seventeen two zero zero two, reserve bid of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the reference is back to section four nineteen of the municipal government act. This report will be posted by, uh, on the MD website as part of the agenda package. Uh, recommendation is that council approves the reserve bid for the Friday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, public auction on lands on the tax arrears list as follows. For legal nine eight two one one two five, lot one, link number zero zero two seven four one five one four one, roll number fifty-nine oh eight seventeen two zero zero two, for a reserve bid of four hundred and twenty dollars, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, my mistake.
There's bad as me. Sold. All right, would someone may like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we set the reserve bid at four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for this property.
All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick for making motion on behalf of council. The council approves a reserve bid for Friday, March fifteenth, two thousand and four, public auction on lands on a tax arrears list as followed, legal description, link, roll number, reserve bid nine eight two one one two five dash dash zero one zero zero two seven four one five one four one, five nine oh eight one seven two zero two for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a question on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this is for one piece of property that somebody's in arrears on their taxes?
Correct.
And if they come in before, between now and the fifteenth of March, then it won't go to auction, those, if they pay their taxes between then, it'll just be done.
There's two options. One, they can come at that, uh, between now and the auction date, even just as the auction is just about ready to start, they could pay their arrears in full, or they can, uh, sign up for a, uh, uh, payment plan for arrears, both options.
Okay.
Any other discussion? You gonna ask for the vote? Call for the vote?
And just for information for council, what council's voting? The actual ability to, uh, take a piece of property and taxes is even more complicated than that. There's actually a ten and fifteen-year period by which, um, people can re, uh, can get their property back. Uh, the MGA is quite complicated in terms of, uh, tax forfeiture. Normally doesn't happen, but there are, uh, there are, uh, the MGA does allow for long, long-term, um, that people keep an interest in the property until such time as it's, it's, too much time has passed. And I believe, I, I believe it's fifteen years.
There's a fifteen-year period and a ten-year period, depending upon whether or not the property did not sell at public auction-
Correct.
And the municipality chooses to take title on it, or if the municipality did sell it at public auction, then those monies are put away for, I believe it's ten years, uh, before it can go back into general revenue. So any party who had an interest on the property can go to Court of King's bench to make a claim.
Okay, thank you, that was Carrie. Yes, uh-
Yeah, I was just cutting down a rabbit hole. So down to, so we take our part of the taxes off and then the rest gets paid back if they so choose?
Correct. Okay, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Onto nine point five point one?
Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
If council could indulge, could we just get a motion to table the department report to the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Who would like to do that? Thank you, Counselor Fadia for tabling the fourth court report for corporate services. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, Stephanie. Good afternoon, Mr. Vespulco.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I'm here with, uh, policy number C four B point zero one zero, water and sewer service policy amendment. Council passed policy C, uh, dash four B point zero one zero, water and sewer service policy at the regular meeting of council on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. After a recent event, administration felt prudent to add an additional paragraph to the policy regarding payment of fees prior to any work commencing. At the January sixteen, twenty twenty, uh, four, sorry, it's twenty twenty-four Committee of the Hole meeting, uh, the committee approved recommending to council to approve, uh, policy C dash four B point zero one zero as amended. And attached as appendix A is the policy. There are no budgetary impacts. Uh, the communication would be posting the, uh, the new policy on the MD website on the poli, in the policy section. And it's administration's recommendation that council adopt, adopts amending policy number C dash four B point zero one zero, water and sewer service policy as recommended by the Committee of the Hole.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion for option one.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Slipchak, for making a motion on behalf of council that council adopts amending policy number C dash four B zero one zero, water and sewer policy, uh, sorry, water and sewer services policy as recommended by Committee of the Hole. Any discussion on this policy? Motion, I mean. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you. Onto nine point five point two, you're welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve and council.
Good afternoon.
Today I have due an RFD for a right-of-way pipeline placement request. Administration received an email from Canadian National Natural Resources Limited requesting consideration to place a pipeline parallel to an undeveloped road allowance less than the thirty-meter setback outlined in policy four A dot zero one four, pipeline crossings, right-of-way policies attached as appendix, appendix A. This road allowance is located on the south boundary of southeast thirty sixty-three five, west of the fourth meridian. Attacks, attached as pen, appendix B, the proposed route is attached in appendix C. Administration has reviewed the location and determined that the likelihood of developing this road allowance is minimal and therefore recommend a setback from the north boundary of this road allowance of ten meters instead of thirty meters outlined in the policy. Uh, no budgetary impact. Uh, communication strategy council minutes will be posted on the MD website. The administrative recommended action is that council approves the request by CNRL to place a pipeline parallel to the undeveloped statutory road allowance located on the south boundary of southeast thirty sixty-three five west of four at a ten-meter setback instead of the thirty meters required under policy.
Thank you, Counselor Slipchak.
Yeah, so if we, uh, approve this ten-meter setback, what happens? Like I know says, like, there's slim chance that roadway would be, uh, uh, whatever fixed up. But what if we, uh, if we do decide to do it in five years? What, then the pipeline has to be moved or who'd be responsible for that cost?
Through the Reeve, to Counselor Slipchak, no, we're, we're recommending a ten-meter setback from our existing, so that would allow us ten additional meters. We're not allowing them to abut our twenty-meter right-of-way, so we would still have allowance to, to upgrade that road. That's why we, that's why we recommend the ten meters.
Someone like to make a motion or any other comments? Yes, counsel? Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fadia, for making a motion on behalf of council that council approves the request by CNRL to place a pipeline parallel to undeveloped statutory road allowance located on the south boundary of southeast, southeast thirty sixty-three five west of the fourth and at a ten-meter setback instead of the thirty meter required under policy. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, counsel?
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Reeve, is that, was, uh, was the policy of, um, an AER policy or provincial policy, the, the thirty-meter policy? Is that, whose policy was that?
Through the Reeve, to Counselor Swager, that's our policy?
That's probably our policy.
Kind of based on, I'm just kind of curious, what, based on what, like, is there issues that, I guess, is there issues with it being at ten meters? Uh, why did we come up with thirty? And then, and why, why are they asking for ten? Two questions, I guess, but?
Through the Reeve, to Counselor, uh, Swager, so in the past, there is an issue if, uh, all, all original undeveloped road allowances are twenty meters or sixty-six feet. Um, if you ever do go to redo the road, you typically, with today's standards, you need a wider right-of-way to accommodate the lines and grades and, and your, and maintain your four-to-one slopes, which is what most class four roads are. So it's in our policy for that reason. Um, they actually asked for it to be right up against our, our undeveloped road allowance, which we are not comfortable with, but ten meters, we feel if there, should there ever be a road, uh, constructed in this undeveloped road allowance, that would still give us ample space.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to table infrastructure services fourth quarter report? Is that correct?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Call for the vote. So on to nine point six point one? Good afternoon, Stephanie.
Hello.
That's Carrie.
Um, so the Summer Village of Pelicanos submitted a request to the MD asking us to partner with them in establishing and managing a regional assessment review board and subdivision development and appeal board. Um, the Summer Village of Pelicanos has made this request citing challenges which can be found in their- can be found in the request letter attached as appendix A. The current ICF agreement between the two municipalities, which was adopted by both councils in February twenty twenty, includes a provision for potential future projects, shared services, or agreements as an appendix to the document. This list included the Summer Village's interest in discussing the establishment of a regional ASB and SDAB. The excerpt, the excerpt of that appendix is attached to this report as appendix A. Sections four fifty-five and six twenty, six twenty-seven of the Alberta Municipal Government Act does allow for the creation of joint assessment review boards and subdivision development, subdivision and development appeal boards through bylaw, and then also outlines any additional requirements with regard to the establishment of these joint boards. There are some benefits to forming a regional ARB and/or SDAB, which include the promotion of regional collaboration, it strengthens the relationship between the councils, and then creates a benefit to the residents with efficient service delivery. Some concerns include establishment of the processes for a joint board to operate during appeals that accommodate both municipalities, establishment of an effective dispute resolution process that accommodates both municipalities, identifying the requirements of each municipality, and then any potential additional training for board members to ensure understanding of the differences between each municipality's land use bylaws. An identical request was received by the Village of Glendon in twenty twenty-one, which was denied by council at that time. Attached for review, in appendix A is the letter of request from the Summer Village. Appendix B is the excerpt from the ICF agreement. Excuse me. This could potentially line with our strategic, council's strategic plan for goal one, building a viable and diversified regional economy, with the objective of maintaining and enhancing intermunicipal collaboration on economic development projects and initiatives. If approved by council, this would become a new regional initiative anticipated to enhance that relationship. The only added costs anticipated would be extra time from the board clerk to facilitate hearings should anything arise from the other municipality. Communication strategy is that the Summer Village will be notified of council's decision, and the recommended action is at your discretion. The council options are to approve the request, or deny the request. Another option I put in there was the, a similar motion that was passed by council when the request came in from the Village of Glendon, which was to deny the request, but also remind the municipality that there are options to request access to our board members if they ever need it. Those board members can choose to, to accept that request on their own accord as well.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to make a quick mention that if council was interested in approving the request, whether or not you would want to consider reaching out to the other neighboring municipalities, such as the Village of Glendon, perhaps, to see if they are still interested, if this was in interest of council at this time.
Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion for option one.
Are you wanting, is there any interest with council reaching out to the other municipalities, or are you just wanting to do this with the Summer Village?
Well, I guess my, my point is that I, it almost should be a regional thing. I would ask if Summer Village actually has any members that can sit on ARBs and CARBs, and they probably don't right now, do they?
So, one of the challenges they cited in their letter was that a lot of their residents are not permanent residents, they're seasonal, and to be...
Yeah, so I just making the point, it is kind of difficult, but if, yeah, if you had a regional board, I think you'll just, you'll get that many chances, maybe for other members to be, to be, you know, trained in that, even the MB of Bonneville, we could use more people trained in that, so it's, I think it's fine to have a regional board. Yeah, so option one, and you can consider, I don't know what Glendon does, they probably haven't had any, they haven't had any ARBs or SRBs for a while, so, not sure.
You're making a motion for option one?
It was option one. And I don't know if you wanna, do you wanna, you said, you want to add something to that option, like open it up to Glendon?
So, if there was interest by council, we could add to the motion for option one to, which would also provide direction to administration to reach out to either the Village of Glendon specifically, or neighboring municipalities in general, to see if there's any interest from any other parties to develop a regional board with, with, with multiple municipalities involved. I don't know exactly how that works, I do know that it exists, I do know that other regions do this, I, I'm not familiar with how those work myself, but...
I know we draw from the region. If we're short, we draw from the region, but this is not specific to, you know, I don't, you know, it's, it becomes more training on the people that are, because they have different bylaws, right? So, how, how does that work? I mean, these guys are big enough to, to take taxes in, and this has been an ongoing thing. I mean, this is not the first time this request has been done, or is it? I think this is the first time they've done this request. What's happened in the past? How come these guys can function for so long, until, until last year? In all fairness, if we're gonna do it, we should do it for Glendon as well, it's no use us saying no to Glendon, and now we're gonna say yes to Pelican Arrows.
Yeah.
And there's also Bonneville Beach, too. I don't know what they have, but that's another Summer Village right there.
Well, it says that they've never had to do, they've never had a, a request before, but now they're mandated to, right? So, to me, it's probably just another thing that they need to check off, and we'll never hear from it again, right? I think it's an easy guess, why not, right? So...
I, is there, if we did go down this route, like, do we need to have some kind of an agreement with them? Because if there is requests in the future, then that are going to, is that gonna incur extra costs?
So, if council decided to approve the, the request to create regional ARB and SDAB, we would need new bylaws. That needs to be established through bylaw, so we would have to pass a new bylaw, recognizing the joint board, and then the Summer Village would have to pass an identical bylaw doing the same, and that bylaw would, again, I, I don't know exactly how it works, it would either adopt a document outlining the terms of the board's operation, or have those terms within the bylaw directly, but...
So, Mr. Reeve, what's, what's typical is, on these regional issues, that if a small, if a small player in a larger board can't find the people to put in, there will still be response, let, let's say, for example, that we wanted seven people regionally to be able to sit on a three-person SDAB. Each municipality will be responsible for X number of people. Let's say for a moment the Pelican Arrows can't find people, it's still be responsible for the payment. Let's say we provided the two people that Pelican Arrows is supposed to provide, we, they would have to pay us to train those two people, so those costs would be borne by them, even though maybe we're finding two people out of the MD, because they can't find anybody out of Pelican Arrows, they would still be responsible for those costs, for however, however that board is formulated into three from the MD, two from Pelican Arrows, one from Glendon, but whatever those numbers are, that, that municipality would still be responsible for that portion of the expenses that their slated members, even though maybe they're not coming from their MD, would be responsible for. And that would just be built into the bylaw and into, into any agreement going forward, so...
Mr. Reeve, I, I don't, not sure if that's to be as complex as we're taking it, though, because we've, we've done this over the years, we've had, like, Cliff Martin from St. Paul would come to our municipality and sit on our boards, right? Because we need an extra member, so, you know, they've got different bylaws than we do, they've got different land uses, and it wasn't a, any, any big deal, we just did it, and, and he would roam around the country, helping us out, or helping whatever, Coal Lake, or whatever, right? And we can do the same thing. We could send our members to help other communities, too, so it's, you know, I mean, I suppose it's getting to the weeds, but...
One, I, I can clarify, if I remember correctly, Mr. Martin did not sit on the SDAB, he sat on the ARB, which does not really deal with the land use bylaw, it's, that's taxes and assessments, so it's not quite the same. You don't need to know the land use bylaws with ARB, right?
So, if we don't help them, they would need how many members to, to be trained in their own little thing, in their own little world?
Um...
Three?
I think, I think, depending on the type of hearing you're holding, it's, you, it could be up to three.
So, it's hard enough to get three out of our own big MD sometimes, right?
To, to put it in perspective, the town has had an advertisement here for now months for the SDAB here in the town of Bonneville. So, I would think that Pelican Arrows finding one person would be virtually impossible, finding three is not, not, not gonna happen. I, I, I think this opens up the opportunity for a much broader discussion with our ICF partners about a regional SDAB. The town of Bonneville is struggling to fill that board with, I think they're still looking for one or two people. Maybe this is an opportunity for, for the MD slash Stephanie to take the lead by going to these places and create a regional board.
Thanks for volunteering, Stephanie.
To create that regional board, where we might have seven, eight, nine people to pick from at, at any particular point in time. Bonneville Beach, Pelican Arrows, Village of Glendon, Town of Bonneville, us, you could potentially, although I don't know you'd have any success, you could potentially reach out to the city Coal Lake as well. Realizing that Pelican Arrows and Bonneville Beach, there's no development going on there, so I, when, when I met with the, the mayor and the CAO from Pelican Arrows last month, they haven't had an SDAB, I think it's seven years. I don't know what the land development would be going on out there, but it, it would be pretty minimal. Bonneville Beach would be in a very similar situation, those lots have long been since developed until people start renovating and maybe taking stuff down and rebuilding. But I think this is an opportunity to take the lead in, in creating a regional board with the four municipalities, a five municipalities, the two Summer Villages, us, the Village of Glendon, and then the Town of Bonneville. I don't know if any of them are interested, but I don't think it's worth the phone call.
I think that's where we should be going, then, discussing this even, like, what are we gonna, what do you think?
Um...
Same motion.
Could you, could you put the draft motion up?
Okay. We, we do have a motion, I guess.
Yeah.
So, I can, I can, we'll, we'll cast the motion up for you to see, and you can decide if you're happy with that. My guess is that this, this motion would be approving the request from the Summer Village, and then just directing us to reach out to the other municipalities, so whether or not they were interested, we would still proceed with a joint board with the Summer Village, and just simply providing the opportunity for the other municipalities to participate if they were interested in doing so. My guess is...
That's very fair.
Worst-case scenario, it would just kind of delay putting it and having it in place, just to give everyone time to get their, their draft bylaws ready and the, and the terms approved by each council.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Swager, for making the motion that's before us. You guys all read it? Anyone, any other discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think I need a motion to... To postpone the fourth quarter CAO, is that okay, Al, or you? To table, I mean. Does someone like to table the fourth quarter? Yep, thank you. Councilor Fadiev? I'll call for the vote. That's carried. On to nine point seven point one, St. John United.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. Members of council, St. John's United Church has offered the invitation for their Hawaiian luau dine and dance fundraiser on Saturday, March the twenty-third, at the Beaver River Fish and Game Building. You can see the price of tickets there. Just a motion for council, if you'd like any, approve any attendance, as usual.
Would anyone like to attend that?
I went last year, it was a real good event, but I, nobody else came with me, I got no one to dance with, so it'd be nice if another council could...
Yes, council, great guy.
Thank you, I went as well, I'm going on my own, so I bought tickets ready for this year on my own.
Right. Mike bought his own tickets, we're good to go. Anyone else? We just need a motion for, for information, or do we even need a motion?
If you don't intend to purchase any tickets, please make a motion.
It's up to Donnie.
What's that?
You wanna get some tickets, or not?
Yeah, get two tickets.
Okay, can you make the motion, please?
I'll make a motion for two, two tickets for dine and dance, run, or if I want to
You mark that down, Brian, on your calendar, March twenty-third?
It's up here. Okay, thank you, Councilor Slipchak, for making a motion on behalf of council, the council approves attending the St. John's United Church luau dine and dance to be held March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four, at the cost of eighty per ticket for two tickets, to be funded from the two thousand twenty-four council public relations budget. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. On to correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. I think there's a, a list of correspondence in front of you. The only one that I was asked to specifically highlight, as I did receive a call early January from Mr. Rusnek of the, President of the Bonneville Junior Pontiacs, and he was expressing his concern with the fact that they did not receive the grant, and he wanted me to highlight that for council.
Would like, someone like to make a motion to, for correspondence?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to receive the correspondence's information.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve, for making a motion that council accepts the following correspondence's information, one through twenty-three. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried. Okay, reports from members of council. Whoever likes to start first.
I'm at this end, so Coal Lake Regional Utilities Commission, fifth February, just, there was an update on their MBBR moving bed bioreactor, so tenders are going out, and, or tenders have gone out in December, and then tenders close thirteenth of February, so that was their sewage, up, their sewage system, they're, they're kind of now about thirty million dollar sewage system. Yeah. Let's see, what else? Attended Northeast Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunities, so they call the NAAJO, it's, it's a group that was put together, Reeves sits on that group, and it's all the mayors and Reeves, kind of in the northeast area, trying to get the province to realize that the northeast area, you know, has its own kind of concerns and issues, and trying to get some reaction to Highway twenty-eight. So, they picked Highway twenty-eight as a major utility corridor that they'd like the province to work on, so they, they are, that group is interested in trying to push the province to do something with that. And the other initiative they're looking at is the healthcare initiative in the area, they know it's, they know it's an issue, and so they're, Maureen Miller from St. Paul is kind of the healthcare person that's been looking at all the health issues, and so they're kind of putting packages together to send to ministers. They are, they're gonna do a health study, and hire somebody's kind of to write up a package and a letter that will be sent out, there's gonna be campaign letters sent out to all the ministers about the health issues in our area, and advocating for this area for health, and also this municipality will get a copy of, one of those letters before they go out for review. They wanna look at all the hospitals in the area, so they're gonna hire a consultant to kind of do a study and, and look at what facilities each hospital... to kind of do a study and and look at what facilities each hospital has and each healthcare center has and what they're needing. And then that will be brought also back to each community and for input. And then they want to send that off to, I guess, health ministers and that sort of thing to try to straighten out the health issues in the area, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, R M A Zone Five meeting was held here in Fort Kent. Library board meeting, nothing too outstanding there, and also F C S S yesterday are just completing the final review over the year. And yeah, that's, that's about it. Thank you.
Had an oil patch study tour meeting. We're looking to do some tours, and I think Paul McLaughlin, the R M A, he's setting that up quite well. That'll happen right after the F C M conference for people from Eastern Canada. Had a B R F A meeting on the 18th of January. We approved the interim budget, and also I asked the fire chief to find a solution to our cost recovery policy. Said he would look into that. Had a Chamber of Commerce strategic planning session on the 18th. Then I was at the egg service board conference end of January, and also the Crop Roads Cross Conference. If anybody wants more information, I can get you stuff on that. I was at the R M A Zone meeting on the 26th as well. It was good to have it here in the area, staff did a good job putting it on. And then on the evening of February 22nd, February 2nd, there was a, the town was doing kind of doctor recruitment stuff, so Brian McAvoy had asked a couple of us to come into that, so I was able to come into town for that and just talk. There was a bunch of students, they were hosting here for a few days. And the third was Irene Wackey's retirement party from the B R F A after 28 years. And then on the 9th of February, we were in Edmonton for the R M R F Law Seminar, and yesterday I was in Edmonton for an announcement for the Alberta 2026 Winter Games and got to meet the minister, a great guy, and looking forward to seeing the games here. That's it for me.
Yeah, just to touch on what Josh has said about the Winter Games, so that's kind of been what our focus has been on with the regional tourism, sports tourism committee that were that were on there. So another little highlight from that is that there were some some concerns about the money, and it sounds like the province ponied up another 420 grand over what they were supposed to, so they've just about doubled what they were committed to. So start off with a pretty nice chunk of change to get those games going, so should be in good shape there.
Okay, I attended Laura Board Meeting, February 5th. Not really much there to report, they're just looking forward to get their plots lined up and get going in the spring here. But on February, or no, March 6th, we have the A G M, which will be at the Goodridge Hall. Did appreciate any support and people come to it. I believe Matt's going to be there. And also, we had a appreciation, farmers appreciation, appreciation night in Glendon R C M P Hall, February night, February 9th, and it was cowboy poultry. It wasn't what I expected, it was pretty good, brought a tear to my eye, and it was good. Thank you.
Thank you. 26th January, went to R M A Zone Five in Fort Kent. 27th was a grand opening of the Glendon Library, they had over 100 people, 139 memberships they have already. End of January, went to a grassroots conference in Calgary, they had an issue on mental health, and they said mental health issues are the highest amongst the farmers in any other occupation. There was a keynote, Dr. Newman spoke on animal-free dairy proteins in ice cream, and they talked about cellular ag, the creation of animal products from non-animal feedstocks. And also a session on A I, very interesting. A I has an IQ of 150, and Einstein had an IQ of 160, but by 2030 or 34, the IQ will be 1,500, so it could be some dangerous stuff happening. February 3rd, went to the Irene Wackey Retirement, 28 years of dedicated service to the B R F A and voluntary firefighter. So we had speeches by the Reeve and the mayor and all the fire chiefs, well-attended event. The 5th, Glendon Library and Bonneville Library, and the 6th, nothing much to report there. February 9th, went to the R M F Law Seminar. There was an issue there, an example of the M D of Bonneville, where they paid $600,000. The payment to his contractor after a subcontractor liens were registered on the title, so there's no payment to be made if there is a lien, and so we had to pay that amount twice. The P P C L A, Prom Payment and Construction Lean Act says that. And yesterday, we went to Policing Committee, and all kinds of stats there, so they're very busy, so that's about it for me. Thank you.
Right, you guys all reported on pretty well everything I went to as well. I just have to shout out an apology to staff there at the zone meeting, you guys, I got up to speak, and I never thanked any of you guys from the staff that put in a lot of time and effort from I T to Stephanie, your group there, so I appreciate it. Jackie, thank you. Robin, all right, you guys know who did all the work there. You guys all had a part, but thank you. Okay. Sure, two minute break.
And Mr. Reeve, before everybody goes, Councilor Kreviak mentioned an interesting thing. We are currently at the at the staff level talking about where and if A I is appropriate in the M D. Municipals are now beginning to deal with whether or not they're going to absolutely ban A I from from internal operations, or if they're going to selectively choose A I in a finance role and a policy creation role in whatever role. But A I is about to become a real issue, because if A I is let loose, it 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 just goes completely rogue. So we're currently beginning discussions, because frankly, I don't know enough about it, and it's way beyond me, but but as A I is exponentially getting smarter every year, at some point, it will completely overtake anything we're doing, and we need some policies in place to protect the M D long term. So I'm glad Councilor Kreviak mentioned that, because that is going to, that is a topic that we are starting to talk about at the staff level right now, is where does A I actually fit into the organization, if it fits in at all?
Thank you. Five minute break. All right, we're going to go into closed session. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Councilor Sipchuk. I'll call for, or all those in favor? That's carried.